Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Seifert. How about a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Chair Dickerson.
Here. Move on to public comment. Period of public comment is for each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items not already on the agenda. Does anyone want to discuss anything not already on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Prior to the consent calendar, we are going to discuss items number two, excuse me, no, excuse me, number three and number five. Both of these have been asked to be continued to a, to a public hearing down the road by the applicants, and so we will go ahead and do that and not listen to the report nor deal with them in any manner.
Okay.
Do we have to take a motion for that?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion for that?
I move that we continue item number three, Kia permit amendment at 2175 South Bradley Road. So.
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move that we continue Costco general plan and zoning amendment at 1335 South Bradley Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And those will be re-notice just for the members of the public. We will resend out notifications for when the future continued hearing will convene.
Thank you very much. The consent calendar, the consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request by commission members. Should anyone, including the members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. There is a single item. Does anyone want to pull this from the consent? Okay, I'll lead a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, the skilled nursing facility permit amendment at 526 Plaza Drive.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number two. It is my understanding that Mr. Seifert, Commissioner Seifert.
I would be recusing myself on this one.
Recusing yourself, all right. We will call you back in shortly. Item number two, fairway tentative parcel map at 1223 Fairway Drive. Can we hear from staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Chairman Dickerson, my name is Ivana Young and I'm staff planner with the community development department. I'm here today to present the fairway parcel map, the tentative parcel map at 1223 Fairway Drive.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I have to recuse myself as well.
Yep, has to recuse herself as well, so we're down to three.
Okay. Again, good evening remaining commissioners. The project site for the tentative parcel map is located at the northwest corner of Fairway Drive and Skyway Drive. Currently located on the parcel is the General Telephone Company now known as Frontier Telephone Company Communications, and there are three buildings on site, and they are proposing to create two lots on this 6.5 acre parcel in order to sell off a portion of the property that is not being used. This property is zoned for PDM1 light manufacturing, and it is also surrounded by similar uses to the north and the south. Immediately adjacent to the west is a public facilities zone property which acts as the Schumash Casino Park and Ride Lot for their employees. This is a little clear close-up of the site, and the portion that the applicant is interested in selling would be the northwest corner of Fairway and Skyway Drive, the parking lot that is currently vacant. And as I mentioned before, the applicant wishes to divide the parcel into two. The first parcel, parcel one, would be 1.3 acres, and the parcel two remaining where all the buildings would be located is 5.2 acres. There will be a no build easement along the eastern side of the bottom portion of parcel two. And at this moment, there will be no construction activities planned, and any future development will require a plan development permit reviewed and approved by the planning commission and a building permit application. Staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any questions for staff? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there was a, where's that 30-foot no build zone?
Yeah, I can, where do I do the, this one right here? Yeah, okay. Perfect, thank you. It's a required building condition for the subdivision permit, but it's going to be right along right here. Because it's less than 30 feet.
Are there any driveways to that parcel, or to the proposed parcel now?
Yes, so the newly created parcel on parcel one, there is one in ingress and egress driveway located at the northern site furthest away from the intersection. That is also one of the conditions from the subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the conditions of approval under Public Works, condition B and C, the parcel one says that parcel one will have right-in, right-out ingress and egress access driveway from Skyway Drive, but then also says that they're going to have right-in, right-out access from Fairway Drive. So I'm just wondering, is that, is that correct? Because they wouldn't have a left-out of that parcel, so.
We can correct that to have a left-out on the Fairway Drive. Skyway Drive has a median.
Right.
And would not have a left-out.
Okay.
So, just to clarify further, that was Mark Mueller with Public Works Department, so we're seeing in 8C it will have a left-in, is that what the correction would be?
A full access driveway, so you can make a left-in or out.
So it'll be parcel one shall have a full access ingress and egress access? Is that basically it? Yes?
Yes, Chair Dickerson.
Okay.
If I may.
Absolutely, sir.
Sure. So I was looking at the parcel map, the tentative parcel map, I noticed at the very corner, the parcel line, I don't know if this is just because it's tentative, but the parcel line seems to extend towards the intersection. Is there a right-of-way dedication that needs to be made there for the sidewalk and the signal and, and anything that needs to happen for any public improvements at, at that corner?
Commissioner Blanco, I'm not, I'm not sure if that has a pedestrian access easement or not, or if there needs to be a right-of-way dedication.
I'm seeing what you're talking about, the northern hard line with the, it goes into the middle of Skyway there.
Right.
Let me check on that, I'm going to ask the applicant. It could just be an error on the map, so I want to check on that.
If there's existing right-of-way now, or if there needs to be a dedication? Okay. I think, one more question.
Please.
There was some discussion about utility easements, but I didn't see on the map where those were actually labeled on the perimeter. So I realize, I think they're in the conditions, but the tentative map doesn't at least spell about, I didn't see them clearly on here, so if somebody can either point to them or just, they need to be incorporated maybe into the map as well?
We can ask the applicant those questions.
All right. So we do. Further questions? No?
Nope.
And I did skip this, is there any disclosure of any commissioners for communications with the applicant attorney? And there aren't any, probably? Okay. All right, why don't we go ahead and open this up to the applicant? Mr. Blau, if you could state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Dan Blau, 2353 Bay Street, my address. Would you answer your question on the easements? There's existing utility easements that serves the Verizon property in 10-foot behind the sidewalk on, on Fairway. Those don't change, they're going to remain there. In regard to the access we're talking about, yes, there is a left-hand turn lane onto Fairway, and it's shared. There's a 20-foot commonery driveway between the existing building and the new parcel. So we actually share that, that driveway that's on, on Fairway. This is straightforward, just creating a new lot, no construction, no works can be done. There will be some work done, and you'll have an opportunity to further condition the property when we come back before the PD, with the PD permit, but at the moment, we're not changing anything that's existing there now. All the changes that need to occur will occur with a PD permit, yeah. So I'm here to answer any questions. It's really just pretty simple and straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Blau. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the ultimate goal of the project? Is it?
Don't know yet. To tell you the truth, this is a, it's been exciting property to buy. It only took us forever to get that one. We paid full price, we agreed to do the mapping process, we did everything. It took us forever to get this thing signed, so, and it wasn't until about three weeks ago that we actually have a signed contract and ready to close escrow, so.
But the intent is to keep it as an M1, or is it, or is it to be rezoned?
I don't really know yet. Probably going to be rezoned. Don't know yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez? Oh, you already did, I'm sorry. Commissioner Blanco?
So, Mr. Blau, you mentioned that there are existing easements. I think we certainly want to show them on the tentative parcel map, so if we can, you know, can make that happen to be updated to verify those.
We could probably do that, yeah. I mean, they exist already, if you were to pull up a title report or alter source, actually, we do have an alter survey on this particular parcel. That's one of the things that, that Variety, Frontier wanted to have happen. So on alter survey map, which has been filed, all those easements are there along with everything else, encroachments, everything else you could imagine. So it's.
I guess I would, I would just ask that those are verified and put on the map typically on the tentative parcel map, those, those are included, so I, I trust that they're there, but.
They're there, they're on the alter survey map, which we, you know, we paid, I think, $3,000 for. It shows all the easements and all the encroachments on the entire site.
Okay.
We can ensure that those are reviewed with a final map process with Public Works.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Further questions? No? Okay, then we will, is there any written communication regarding this topic? No? And I have no slips for that. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the, to the commission. Any comments or motions? This will actually take a resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I, one of the concerns I had initially when I looked at it was the ingress and egress onto Skyway, just because that's a, that's a pretty fast street. But I think that in the future, if we do see a PD for this, I think we can, we can look at that then.
Take care of it then.
Right. That's about the only comment I have.
All right. Commissioner Blanco?
No further comment, thank you.
Okay. We need a, if we're going to pass this, we need a resolution, and if, it's resolution number 2769, and it should reference the easement map and the modification to 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
That the planning commission by resolution 2769 approved the tentative parcel map, TR 2019 0001, including the changes to 8C and the easement language that was, that was talked about at this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Resolution passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we get, huh? Yeah, that's right, the better half. Okay, let's move on to item number four, the continued item Cox bungalow permit amendment at 1141 West Cox Lane. Let's hear from staff.
Good evening, chairman, commissioners, Nada Zaire with the planning division, principal planner. We, we are here tonight again to talk about the Cox bungalow project located at 1141 Cox Lane. Before I dig into the different aspects of the project and the site and location, just to refresh the planning commission's memory on this, and for the public, this came before the planning commission several times. Back in October of 2018, this project came before the planning commission for consideration of a general plan amendment and zone change, an environmental document that consisted of a mitigated negative declaration, a plan development permit for the development itself, and that was approved by the planning commission and moved forward to city council who approved the general plan amendment and zone change. The site was then purchased by the housing authority just recently, and this project came back before the planning commission a few weeks ago on March 20th for a modification to the project description. The project was originally approved as a senior housing development, and the housing authority wants to modify that, the demographic of what will be allowed to be housed at this site to those that are in an affordable bracket range of low-income housing and who have special needs. The project was continued from the March 20th hearing to this date for us to provide you with more information, particularly as it contained to what special needs housing was, and then further examples of parking demands that have been accounted for in other projects of similar type by the housing authority. So we're back again this evening, we have that additional information for you, and I will just go through a brief presentation of what the project consists of, and then we'll go further into those questions the planning commission had. So the project site is located at 1141 Cox Lane. It is surrounded by single-family residents in an R1 single-family residential zoning district. The site was previously also zoned R1. However, the GPZ that was approved back in October of 2018 changed the zoning of this site to R3, high-density residential, and that was to provide the density necessary for the proposed project. This is county land to the west of the project site and active ag land. It's, the project site's bound by North Blosser Road to the west and then Cox Lane to the south. Here's a closer view of the site. There was a single, a large single-family residence on the site now on a larger-than-average lot. It was a remainder piece of this area that was developed as a subdivision, and this lot remained. The applicant is still proposing to construct 21, 29 housing units with one caretaker's unit on the site. It will consist of access off of West Cox Lane into a common parking lot area that will have 14 parking spaces, and the one-story buildings will surround that parking lot. These will be one-story units that have one bedroom each in them. There are other amenities on site like a community building, which is located here, that provides amenities for the residences that will be there, and then there's also community garden space and walking paths in the remainder of the project site. As I mentioned, this was originally approved as a senior project. They're redesignating it as an affordable project for special needs. Our zoning code doesn't distinguish between affordable or special needs projects versus just standards multifamily projects, and so our parking requirements are the same. And it would require for a project of this size of 30 units to have 30 covered spaces and 30 uncovered spaces to accommodate the 30 units. The applicant is asking for a parking reduction for that, and we'll go into further discussion about why that would be justifiable for a project of this type and what are the alternatives besides parking on site. The project meets its landscape requirements and all other requirements. Here is a bird's-eye view of the project site with the proposed project overlaid. As you can see, here's Cox Lane, here is the, the channel that runs along Blosser Road that is between the road and the proposed project, and you can see the driveway access into the project site and the proposed one-story buildings. There is an existing boundary wall that is on Cox Lane that will be removed, and these units will front Cox Lane again to further integrate the project into the existing neighborhood and provide a similar single-family residential character of what else is seen in that area. There is also a boundary wall on the rear portion of the project site that fronts DeJoy Street. There was much discussion from the adjoining neighborhood and a desire from the adjoining neighborhood for that wall to remain. It will remain intact, there will just be one access gate for emergency access reasons or if the residents wanted to exit from that location, but there will be no driveway access or any other access of that type through that wall. Also, this adjoining neighbor to the north also wanted the wall that separates their unit and the proposed project to be extended. The housing authority has agreed to do that, and a condition has been added into the permit amendment for two additional feet to be added to that wall, again, as a good faith effort from the applicant and the surrounding neighborhood. Here are a depiction of the elevations of what the units will look like. Again, they're one-story, this is a two-unit compilation here, and here again is the street view from Cox Lane of what the project will look like to the, fronting the residents in that area. It's a bungalow-style architecture, and there'll be a variety of different colors for them. As you can see, there's different color options here, just to add some variety. Here's a view from the parking lawn on the interior of the project site, looking at some of the bungalows within the site. And here's another view from the interior of the project site. Again, there's porches along the fronts of these bungalows and shared common space in the, in the center with landscaping and garden space. To dive into the questions that the planning commission had at the last hearing, one particular question was what defines special needs housing and how is that different to other housing types? Here is the state's definition of what special needs housing is, for the purposes of what the housing authority will be requiring of its tenants at this location. Special needs refers to those that have mental health or physical disabilities, develop, developmental, wow, that was a mouthful, developmental disabilities, including but not limited to intellectual cerebral palsy, epilepsy, or autism, and those that are at risk of homelessness. It also identifies those that are able to receive assistance in mental health services that are funded by the mental health service fund to be eligible for housing in these type of projects. The applicant is here tonight, able to answer any further questions the planning commission would have about this housing type or group? Should you have any further questions?
Thank you very much, Nada. Before we move into questions for, pardon? You're not done?
I'm not done.
My apologies.
Sorry, no, it's okay.
Usually it's that, you know, here for questions thing, and then you just, okay.
Just wanted to clarify, if you wanted more information specific to that, they're able and ready to answer your questions in relation to that. The planning commission did have other questions at the last hearing, particularly as it pertained to parking and this large parking reduction that's requested by the applicant from going from 60 parking spaces to only 14 and not having covered parking. They, there are lots of other alternate transportation types that are available for this project, based on the type of population they will be serving. One that's available to the entire community is the transit system that's run by the city of Santa Maria. Here is a depiction of the project site and where the closest transit stop is in relation to that, to the site. It is less than half a mile away, which is about a seven-minute walking distance, and residents at this location could readily use the transit services that are provided. Again, this is a low-income special needs housing, and so the majority of the residents, as the applicant will explain, do not have the income levels to sustain purchasing and owning a vehicle and maintaining a vehicle, so they will be relying primarily on alternate modes of transportation. Another mode of transportation that the applicant identified is available is SMAT service. SMAT provides ADA services curb-to-curb transportation for individuals with disabilities, and the majority of the tenants in this development would qualify as individuals with disabilities. The applicants identify that they make it aware and known to all of their tenants that this service is available for them and help them utilize that service. And finally, the last alternative transportation item they did identify was they do partner with many service providers such as United Way and the County of Santa Barbara Behavioral Wellness Department, and those different agencies themselves provide service to picking up and assisting this demographic in getting to appointments or other things that utilize their services. So that van assistance program is also available to them. If, if this is not enough of an assurance, we have also included additional parking conditions in the permit amendment that require the housing authority to put vehicle ownership restrictions on the project. This would be incorporated into their agreements with their tenants and would restrict the amount of vehicles that were allowed, and that would be monitored by the housing authority. Also, if all else fails and all of those other service providers or SMAT discontinues their service, they, we have placed another condition that will require the housing authority to find some other type of shuttle service provider to be able to be readily available to provide their tenants' transportation needs. In addition, the housing authority has provided some statistics, and they have further statistics that they will go into, but this was in the staff reports that were provided to the planning commission, and just wanted to briefly touch on these again. This was a analysis the housing authority took a couple of years ago in regards to their projects at Ted Zinich Gardens, Rancho Hermosa, and Pescadero Lofts. Here are the unit counts of those projects, and as you can see by what's actually used of the parking in the projects, is less than 100% of the parking was used, and this was taken at 7:00 PM in the evening when most residents would be home. The majority of them, particularly the bottom two, used less than 50% of the parking that was on-site in those, in those projects. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm here and available for any questions you should have about the project and any of the details I presented, and then the applicant is also here to provide you more specific information about parking demands of their projects.
Now?
Now.
Now?
Now.
Awesome. All right, we've heard staff presentations. Disclosure, any Commissioner Communications, have the Commissioners, have any of the Commissioners spoken with the applicant or anyone? No? Thank you very much. Then questions for staff of the, by the Commissioners? Commissioner Seifert?
I have a question, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. When we spoke last time about the vehicles, I noticed in the verbiage up there, it didn't say anything about off-site parking, because there was, the Housing Authority said that they would also be monitoring any parking. And even though you put it in this verbiage, I didn't see that, where we're requiring, we are requiring that.
Are you referring to the vehicle ownership restriction?
Yes.
In adding additional language that ensures that they're monitoring vehicles on-site and off-site?
Yes, because that was a major concern of all of the residents in that neighborhood about the off-site parking, and that was one of the major things that they talked about.
Absolutely. The Planning Commission desires we can modify that condition to specify both on-site and off-site vehicles.
I've got a few more. The transit stop says it's seven minutes away walking distance, but when we're looking at the discussion of the special needs housing, we're talking about physical disabilities. So if we have people with physical disabilities, they're not going to make it in seven minutes, if at all. Is there a way that we can, I mean, what are we talking about? A curb cutout for a traffic transit stop? Is that, is that what it?
Well, if I may.
Am I mistaken?
The SMAT transportation, which was the second item on this, provides ADA services with those with disabilities, and they'll come curb-to-curb, so they'll pull up to the project site.
And do they have hours, SMAT?
SMAT's hours? I'm not sure what their hours of operation, but I'm sure the applicant could provide.
That was something else we discussed, too, was making sure that it was available at the hours that they needed it.
Sure, and we can ask the applicant for further information about the SMAT service hours.
Didn't the applicant report that they had a contract with Smooth?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
And they wanted to know what the terms were? Did you guys look into that?
And I'll let the applicant talk more about those questions they were going to dig into for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seifert, any more?
No, I think that's it for this moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, so the transit stop at Western Avenue, in addition to maybe being difficult to get to by people with disability, is there a good path? I mean, what would be the logical path for somebody to get over to that transit stop?
Cross to Donovan to Western?
So we just map this on Google and Google Maps, and you can select the different types of transportation. There are sidewalks, and so a resident could take the sidewalks along here. They would need to cross Donovan Road to do so, and then take the sidewalks down to the stop. They could, we wouldn't recommend going down Blosser, but they could do that as well if they wanted to. Go out here to Blosser Road, take the sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk on Blosser? Yeah. Take the sidewalk down to Blosser.
Is it, okay. Yeah, I was concerned with the crossing at Donovan, because obviously that's a very busy street. I don't know that there's a
Yes.
A crossing near Western and Donovan.
There is no crossing, go ahead.
Commissioner Blanco, there is a signalized intersection at Blosser Road and Donovan, and then at the, there's a mid-block crosswalk at Donovan and Western.
Oh, there is a mid-block crosswalk there?
There is a mid-block crosswalk there.
Okay. And there is full sidewalk on Blosser on that side? I don't remember.
I believe so. I believe that would be my suggested route, would use Blosser Road, cross at the intersection.
The intersection. Okay, thank you.
Further questions? So with that being roughly half a mile, .4 miles away from that site, so I guess what we're saying is that that is the closest, so even if you went north, the mass transit doesn't have a stop anywhere in that area that's closer than .4. Is that, is that right, Neta?
Yes, this map was just to the closest stop. There are other stops in the area, but they're not as close as this one.
I see. And what would it take to get a stop somewhere situated that was closer or to that whole community in there?
I will defer to Public Works.
Well, then we'll ask Public Works.
Chair Dickerson, we'd have to run that by the Transit Division. It'd be, I don't, I don't know what it would take to change a route to have a closer stop or to include a new route at this time.
Okay, so you don't know what it takes to either change or to add one? I mean, basically, they, they've got a laundry list of adds, and it would just go in the mix, is that right?
Correct. Transit, a lot of transit funds come from federal government, so they have certain requirements and timings that they're required to meet.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could address Commissioner Seifert's question. According to the website for the SMAT ADA service, they run from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Stinkoiev. So that's, it shuts off at 4:00, so that was a, that was a concern also.
Further questions? No? We'll go ahead and hear from the applicant, if we could. Whoever is the official speaker for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts. Neta went through the first part
Your address, Lori?
2624 Eric Park Drive.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Neta went through the first part of our presentation. We did provide some additional information, I believe, also to the Planning Commission, and that was the agreement that would be provided to the tenants that would have cars. I don't know if you did get a copy of that, but it would be an add-on to the lease for those that want to have cars, or they also, at the same time, also agree that they will not have a car. So both of those
I don't think we got it.
Items are
I don't believe we got them.
Okay.
No, we did not conclude those in the packets.
Okay. Neta, did you receive a copy of that agreement?
I did, yes.
Okay, okay. So we wanted to make sure that you had, you know, an understanding that there are these agreements that can be added to the lease that identify as a person is becoming a tenant, that they acknowledge that they will either have a car or not have a car. And those that are first come, first served, those that want a car and have it, they will be the ones that will have cars, they'll have an assigned space. So I think that was one of the critical questions that was asked early on, was how do you monitor this? How do you manage it? And that's part of the Housing Authority's management of the complex, is having these agreements and monitoring them throughout the life of that particular tenant. So we'll make sure you get a copy of that.
And that, that will be also effective off-site, on-site?
Correct, because it's a question of ownership of the car. If they have a car, they need to agree that it's on-site on the property, not somewhere else in the area.
Thank you.
And it's, and it's a workable car.
Is everybody who's living in, as a tenant in a particular unit, on the lease? Or is it, or, in other words, could you have somebody who is signed up as the leaseholder, but then they have a secondary person who's living there, a child, you know, a teenage child or whatever, and that could be a car owner?
This is part of the management of the Housing Authority, is first of all, you have to qualify for the income level. You have to qualify as to one of the special needs, and you have to identify the people in that unit. And those people, that qualifying group, has to agree on whether to have a car or not. And the first come, first served, as far as the car's availability on that site.
My, I have a question.
Yeah, it's the entire family.
So now, if we have people with special needs who require nurses to come who have cars, how would you address that?
For the individual services throughout the day? Would you like?
Well, because we have, it's, in the definition, it says physical disabilities, mental health, developmental, so I assume that these people would require people to come to their home, like nurses or, you know, advocates who provide services.
Right.
My name is Bob Havlicek, Executive Director for the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. My work address is 815 West Ocean Avenue in Lompoc. Chair Dickerson, Commissioners, your question on the, just to go back to the parking thing for, it, when we're qualifying the household, it isn't just the head of household. It, the family composition, whatever that might be, have to declare all vehicles, if they have any. And as a practical matter, the vast majority of them will not. And then, then your next question was, if you, if you could repeat it for me?
So we're dealing with people who have mental health, physical disabilities, and so a lot of that requires nurses or advocates or people who provide services to them. And so where, how would you address the parking for the people who come and provide services?
Yes, so I believe we have one of the 14 places for a guest parking. So, so there's, there's at least one space available. And then, and then also one for staff of the 14 spaces.
Further questions, time? Okay, go ahead, continue with your presentation.
Sure, we'd like to run through our photographs of
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lopez, was there a specific question you wanted at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There was a, Lori, you brought up that the parking was going to be on a first come, first served basis. Was that for the first 50% of the 14 spaces? What was that limit of the first come, first served parking?
12, 12 spaces. We have 14 on-site, we have one for the staff manager, one for guests, and there'd be 12 available.
And of those 12, or of those 14, how many are designated accessible van, van spaces?
We have two parking spaces that are accessible.
Okay, so, so then there's really 12 total?
Mm-hmm.
And, well, there's really
10.
10 total.
Right, you're right.
And so would those 10 be the first, be available to the first come, first served people?
Yes. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if we could just run through the photographs, I think it was very important that you understood the mission of the Housing Authority and the role that they play in the communities, providing a wide range of housing for those that are disabled or special needs. This is their mission statement. If you can go to the next slide. Again, a little bit of background information that we presented last time, but it's important to restate how important they have been for the city of Santa Maria and their ongoing mission to provide housing in this area. Go ahead. This is the project objectives, and again, this is very low or low income. And the, the income range is between $19,000 a year to about $37,000 a year are the qualifying income range for these special needs. So it's unlikely many of them will have cars and, or be able to drive. Go ahead. Recently, another project in Santa Maria was approved, that's the Depot Street project, and there was recognition of the possibility of not having as much parking, and they did acknowledge that the smaller units could be, which were, at that point, described as single occupancy units, and they did get a parking reduction for that also, only 10 parking spaces for the 40 units. Go ahead. And then again, there's some of the other projects that we've talked about. So we wanted to just flip through, if you could go ahead, and we'll do this quickly. This is Central Park, which is located right at the corner of Main and Broadway on the northeast side, and you can go ahead and flip through. These are, most of the parking has carports, and you can see that through the middle of the day, we have timestamps on these, you can see how many, or how few parking spaces there are. As you get later in the day, this is 5:00 at night, and you still have quite a few open spaces, just because the tenants don't have cars. And this is in the evening, there's still a lot of spaces open. Go ahead to the next one. This is Rancho Hermosa project, this is on Inger. This is actually a family project. So this usually, this are two- and three-bedroom units, and this is the overhead shot. This is the one that has podium development on it, so it has an underground garage in some of the units. If you can go ahead and flip through the rest. This is along the street side, no parking was along the street. Go ahead and just keep going. This is the important part, most of the units above the, this platform facility, these are the parking spaces at noon. And then as you go throughout the day, you can see that there's very few parking spaces used. And this is in the evening. And then Ted Zennich, you can see this aerial photograph, this is the one right along the freeway behind Jack in the Box. And this one does have more parking because it is a family project, and if you can keep going through. But again, it's not, they always have some spaces unused. This is in the middle of the day, in the evening, you can see that there's open spaces throughout the project. So the photographs reflect the percentages that were identified earlier in the presentation. And again, these, these particular projects are family projects versus the ones that we're proposing for the cottage bungalow, which is more likely to be single occupancy or a couple, or a couple with a small child. So we're here today hoping for and requesting the approval of the change of use to special needs, low-income units. Everything else on the project remains the same, and we hope we've been able to answer the questions that you raised at the last meeting. And we're available, the team's here, and available if you have any other questions of us.
Thank you very much, Lori. Questions of the applicant at this time? No? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of the 333 units in the city of Santa Maria, how many of those are single resident?
None, single occupancy units.
They're all?
They're, no, are there any studios or one-bedroom units?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't, go ahead.
Commissioner Lopez, they're, they're a mixture. So for example, the, and I don't know off the top of my head, the two family developments that were cited, Ted Zennich Gardens, has a mixture of ones, twos, threes, and fours. Excuse me, ones, twos, and threes, I think. I don't think any four bedrooms. The Central Plaza Apartments is 112 units, and it's also a mixture of ones, twos, and threes. The two special needs developments, Rancho Hermosa, which is 47 units, is a family development, and 41 of those units are three-bedroom units with four one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms. So there's quite a few. And also on Rancho Hermosa, there's three commercial units in the front of the development, one occupied by the Housing Authority and its staff, one occupied by staff from Good Samaritan, and then the third occupied by Transitions Mental Health. So that's, so we don't have any, we do have some developments in other cities that are single-room occupancy only, but not in the city of Santa Maria.
Would you say that there are 30, at least, in the city of Santa Maria, of the 333 units?
With 31-bedroom units?
Right.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm confident of that.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, and then Depot Street will have, it's under construction now, and it has a number of studios, as well as ones, twos, threes, and even a few four-bedroom units.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Staff said that you would be able to answer the question about the Smooth contract?
And I will defer to John Polansky, my colleague from the Housing Authority. He's our Director of Housing Development.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is John Polansky, Director of Housing Development for the Housing Authority. I just checked with Joe, I know who had the, the contract with Smooth. They They primarily serve seniors, an individual has to be age sixty and above, but for the folks that happen to be age sixty and above, they are willing to provide service at the site in addition to the SMAT ADA service that does not have that limitations. And just a minor point of clarification, the hours that SMAT ADA service will take reservations is during the daytime hours, so basically between nine, nine AM and four PM. But their service, so actually provide service from five-thirty AM to ten-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, and seven AM to seven forty-five PM, Saturday and Sunday. So, the, the hours in which you can make a reservation and have service are more extended than the hours where they'll accept a reservation.
Mr. Chairman, I do apologize for that. I just took, I just read the website, and that's what I thought it said, so apologize. Just trying to be helpful, but I was wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Cinco.
Thank you.
Further questions of the applicant? No? Okay. Then I will go ahead and open up to the public for public comment. We will start off with Mr. Bixby.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also asking to have the time of my other four individuals representing.
Right, and I just wanted to, when you get up to podium there, I'm going to clarify who you're representing of these slips, so then I can attach them to your thing. Who are you representing?
Okay. David Bixby, at nine thirty-seven East Main Street, that's my office, and I represent the Zarate family, and these are all members of the Zarate family.
Okay. Can you identify which of these slips, Gloria Zarate, is that? Okay. Javier Hernandez, is that right? And he's, he's one of your clients?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Senior Hernandez is in the second row.
Okay, and Miguel, is that right, also? Okay. And those are the four?
Yes.
Okay, so you got four clients plus yourself. We'll give three minutes to each one, which would be twelve, that's fifteen minutes total for you to-
I don't anticipate I'll need that much time, but I appreciate the fact.
Certainly. So, go ahead and set it for fifteen.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to address in, almost in a line item order. First of all, I want to acknowledge that Joe Househead and Bob Havelch, Havelcheck, came to my office this past week, and we did spend some time talking about this, and Ms. Zarate, Gloria Zarate, and her, was able to come with her brother, so, we appreciate the opportunity to talk to them. I just want to indicate, kind of in a backwards way, starting with some of the last comments, I don't really think it's fair to compare this project to other projects, per se, if the demographics are different, and they certainly are different. For instance, we've had a lot of discussion about the wonderful project, and it is a wonderful project, behind the Jack in the Box on Main Street. But if you, if you take a serious look at that project, you'll see that the, the single family residential area is, is not anywhere near it in terms of, of the difficulty in parking and so forth that people would experience, so. And I've also seen other pictures tonight from other projects, and there are streets immediately by that are not, for instance, the one that's, I'm trying to think of the one that's located on Inger, yeah. There is, there's public parking there, all along there, as opposed to parking in front of somebody's house, or, you know, crowding an existing neighborhood street. The thing about Cox Lane is that it's an arterial pathway into a major building area or neighborhood, and it comes off of one of the busier streets in Santa Maria, that being Blosser. So, we hear all this talk about how it's going to be convenient because we'll have people like SMAT, or the operation of SMAT, and others coming in and using it, but again, I want to remind you that this is an arterial pathway. There's already a lot of traffic on Cox, in and out, all day long. And at nighttime, because of the housing that's, that occurs there on Cox Lane, there's just one car after the next parked along the, the curb. And we've heard comments that's the effect of, well, you know, they're going to have conditions in the leases, and if they don't obey the leases, they'll be evicted. Well, we all know what eviction requires, how much time it takes. It's only as good as the person on site keeps track of that sort of thing. When Bob came into the office this past week, there was some discussion about notifying the manager so that the manager could have a car towed. That's not exactly the best way to develop a good neighborhood relationship, quite frankly. And, and there's, there's a lot of concern that it's going to end up with a hostile relationship rather than a friendly relationship under the circumstances. So, addressing the parking thing, it just doesn't make sense to think that what's, what was supposed to be one, our, our residential development has now turned into thirty, thirty housing units with the potential of eighty-seven occupants, because at the last hearing, we heard that there was going to be up to three occupants per home. So, that, we're talking, you know, if you take away the one that's given to the manager, you're talking about eighty-seven occupants. And fourteen parking places total, two supposedly committed to, one for the manager, I guess, and one for, was it for a guest parking? So, let's just assume, let's assume for a second that there are ten guests that come on any given particular day. I'm not saying that would happen, but it could. Now, we're up to ninety-seven people, and where are all these cars being parked? And we, we hear things like, well, most of them don't have cars anyway, but you know, once the project is built, once the project built, then, then you have to deal with the problems, right? It's too late. So, it's something that needs to be addressed at this stage in the proceeding, and parking is definitely a huge problem. Another concern is the taking down of that wall. Now, the wall at least presents a certain amount of separation. If you take the wall down and people are just free to come and go and so forth without any kind of closure, enclosure around it, they think, you know, the, the project people have indicated, they think it's going to improve or enhance the aesthetics of the place, and perhaps it would. But it also creates other kinds of problems in that people just coming and going and traversing back and forth without any kind of separation. It's a concern to, again, to the people that live on Cox Lane. These people have lived there for a lot of years, and they would prefer to have quiet use and enjoyment of their property. And I think that if, if you're going to have a development like this, it should be someplace which consists an improvement in the area. For instance, on the Inger project, you know, there was a motel that was pretty much dominated by drug traffic, and now they've been able to clean up the area because they have a good, solid, family-based occupancy right there. Other concerns, okay. Now, we've, we've heard what the population would consist of for the very low housing, and that's, that's another concern. You know, with all due respect, I think that, that this commission, as well as the city, is very well aware of the problems that were developed in Evans Park. And Evans Park, of course, is a low-income place as well. And it's also the bedrock for the northwest gang activity. This, there is no limitation as to who can live there, other than that they qualify as low-income people. They can be homeless people, they can be people with mental health issues, they can be people, they can be single parent situations, a mother with teenage sons, whatever. I mean, they can live there because they qualify under the low-income designate. That in itself creates a lot of questions as to what's going to happen? Who's actually going to occupy that? Are you going to have emergency vehicles coming and going? Are you going to have to have ambulances drive in? What, what's going to happen with this? There's really no, there's been no assurances made to this commission as to the population that's going to reside there. It's wide open to anybody that's low-income. And again, the occupants of that neighborhood are concerned about that. They don't want an increase in crime, they don't want an increase in traffic of emergency vehicles, whether they be police, ambulances, or smack buses for that matter. Again, Cox being, that it's a main arterial entrance into a whole development, they're already experiencing traffic problems as it is. There's been some talk about how they can get around the transit issue. I don't believe they can, because according to state law at least, they're required to be able to run every fifteen minutes, correct? And they're indicating that the buses run every thirty minutes. They've also talked about safe traffic places for them to walk. I don't think anybody with a physical handicap or a mental health handicap should be walking down Blosser Road. It's just not a safe road for that. It's a heavily travished, and, and, and we all know that the, the vehicles that travel down Blosser travel at excessive speeds, just like they do on College, and just like they do in other locations where you have thoroughfares. And the police are constantly monitoring that sort of thing. On Blosser Road, I've seen them put up their electric sign on several occasions to try to slow people down, but people on the way to work or coming from work and so forth don't pay attention to that sort of thing. And speaking of crosswax and so forth, on the Blosser and Donovan North End, there is a right turn, yield only, there is no stoplight, there's no stop sign there, it's a yield indicator. And I can just see somebody who has a physical handicap getting, getting hit in that particular intersection. Also, it's already been mentioned that the amount of time that it would take for some of these people to actually get to a public location where they, where they can wait and wait and wait and wait for a bus to come by, because that, buses just don't come down, come by as often as the state says they should be coming. So, when it's all said and done, this started out as a senior project. This was a senior project, and that's a lot to consider, because seniors don't go around getting in trouble with the law, seniors don't necessarily have mental health issues, seniors don't necessarily, are not struggling to regain their occupancy after being homeless for, for who knows how long. So, the Zarates were willing, they were, they weren't happy about it, but they're willing to, to understand that, look, you know, we're going to have senior people living here, they're quiet, it'll be, it'll be a quiet neighborhood at least. Now, they have no such assurance. And quite frankly, the Housing Authority, great people, I, I know they take, they take care of their premises, but that's not the issue. The real issue is the population and the parking. That's the issue. And I don't think anybody in a single-family neighborhood particularly wants to have a high-density population such as this one, right there, where they're located. And we don't want, we don't want to discriminate against people, we don't want to speak out against people, but the, but the realities of the situation is, once this is built, it's too late to make any kind of real adjustments, and, and we still don't have any assurances that there's going to be some way to keep people from parking on that street. Just saying that the manager and that they're going to sign a lease and so forth, that doesn't solve the problem, because they, they can have friends coming, they can themselves, you know, continue to park out in the street, and it's, and it's strictly up to, you know, lease enforcement, which is hardly the best way for the neighbors to have to figure out where they're going to park. So, with that thought in mind, we just would ask you to take another look at it. Oh, and one other thing, I had asked, real quickly, I had asked Bob if he could produce us some statistics about police patrolling in, in neighborhoods frequented by, or in the neighborhood where the Housing Authority goes, and I don't think you were able to produce those, were you?
I can speak to that.
Okay, yeah. But that was something, we just didn't think enough investigation had gone into this project, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bixby. Next up will be Patty Green, three minutes. Ms. Green, if you could state your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you.
Patty Green, seventeen oh seven DeJoy Street. I just wanted to make a couple of comments mostly. Handicapped people walking over to the transit, the bus stop, one, Donovan's a busy street. Try to get out on, off of one of the side streets, and you'll know that. And a lot of the cars don't pay a lot of attention, and there's a school there that people cross all the time, during the daytime, they do have a crossing guard at school times, but it's a busy street. And handicapped people, depending on their handicap, I mean, if you're in a wheelchair, sure, the busts are accessible, but it's a long roll, and I think it'll take them more than seven minutes. Same with people with canes, whatever. I think that seven minute, that you and I might be able to walk it, is unrealistic for many people. And the other question I have is, or concern is, the back gate, they said, would be open for people to come in and out, but at one time, they said it was going to be kept closed, locked, whatever, and only the emergency services would have access. And tonight, that was kind of said, well, it's going to be open, they can walk in and out that way. The other thing is the low-income people, just because you don't have a lot of money doesn't mean you don't have a vehicle. It might be a junker, but a lot of people, just as they had said before, people that were qualified, that had been sleeping in their cars, et cetera. Well, if you take thirty people that have been sleeping in their cars to fill up those places, well, where are their cars going to be? I mean, this, that's a little bit far-fetched, but on the other hand, you get my idea that there will be people that have cars, and just because you're low-income doesn't mean that you don't have some sort of a junker car. And the fact is, many of these people, as we all know, probably have cars, but they're not registered to them, because, and they're not insured, they, you know, they buy cars from other people that they don't bother to register, and they drive them until the registration runs out, then they, then another five hundred dollars or three hundred dollars on another car. So, I just have a concern with them, the people stating that low-income people can't afford cars. That's, in many respects, that's correct, but it's also not correct. There's a little bit more to that. So, that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Salia Udo, is that the last name?
Salgado.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Judy Salgado.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Judy Salgado, and my address is seventeen thirteen North DeJoy Street, and I've been there for over sixty-two years.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. I have another lady that lives across the street from me, who's there, been very ill, but she wanted me to express her, what she would like me to say for her. Her name is Gwen, and the last name is Burke, and she's been there since nineteen eighty-four, she said. That was as close as she could get. And she's very concerned, you know, for the area, because she lives right behind that, that area. And she's, you know, she's had a lot of problems physically, and she's been very upset since she found out that this might be happening. And of course, with the rest of us that live close to her, we understand how she must be feeling since she's by herself. She has also had some moments that have been very difficult, and, but hearing what is going to be, is said to- going to be, is said to may possibly happen in our area, has really concerned her tremendously. I talked with her just before I left right now, and she just wanted me to let you know that there were some things she was concerned about, problems with the homeless, of what kind of homeless were they. And also, she wanted me to ask that on the trailer park by the Bayarda, she says she's concerned about things like that. She put down here, took her, she took a lady into her home, and it didn't work out. And the lady seemed very normal when she went to be there with her. And it, it all went crazy. And so she says, you cannot really determine who's moving in there, you know, even with hers, she didn't catch it. But this can happen, and because we're in a place that is very open, there are so many of us as women that are, live alone. I live alone, so does Gwen, so we try to keep track of each other. And there is another family that lives there that couldn't be here today. And, but I just want to say on her behalf, she said that there was a woman that was murdered by Oakley School, and that always keeps her very nervous, because she's by herself. And I think that most of us that are women would be able to relate to that. Sometimes we're left alone, not necessarily by abandonment, but by, you know, a spouse that passed away, like for her. She also said that our streets are not safe, and she said that it's not safe for anyone to be there. And she's, she says it's horrible. That was, those are her words, and I can give you this list after I finish.
And you'll need to wrap it up, Judy.
Okay.
Your time is over.
I'd like to just go ahead and say that for myself, because I've been there so long. I've been, my home has been broken in two, three times. And it was very, it was a mess. One of them was a neighbor girl that had just moved in with her parents. They were Japanese, so would never known that, you know, something like this could happen. But I just want to say that I hope that you will consider what the attorney has said here today, because I know that he is very well-versed, and many of us are just women, we're homemakers. We're not prepared to come in here and give you a speech that is going to sell it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Would the applicant like to discuss any of the things that were brought up?
Yes. First of all, everything that was said here today is perceptions that people have about special needs and low income, and the Housing Authority is the right organization to manage this property based on their experience, based on their expertise, based on the requirements that they have to get people qualified to come into the project, and also to determine their income levels. And the size of these units, they're 530 square feet, each one of these units, so they're small units with one bedroom, and I think that the effort that's gone into looking at this project, looking at the financing for the project, that this is the right place, the right time for this operation to go into this site. Go ahead, Bob.
So, a couple of comments. I want to start with Evans Park. I did manage to, we have been corresponding with the Police Department, the City of Santa Maria Police Department, in order to get some information and statistics and to understand the information. But on their website, there is a crime mapping, you know, website that shows crime throughout the city. And so you can actually see the crime activity. I'm not sure if it relates to a one-year period or what exactly period it is, but it does show extensive crime throughout the city, and it includes any crime that potentially could be at our developments. I didn't do a physical count, but when, and since Evans Park was managed, I want to pick on that. You can actually zero in on our property, and there's very little activity compared to a lot of other areas within Santa Maria. One of the things that I haven't mentioned before, which I think is really important, is a number of years ago, we started putting a security camera system at all of our developments. So, we have a comprehensive security camera system that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, it has night vision, it obviously can take pictures during the day. It's tied back to a server that allows us to replay footage from whatever camera systems, cameras are operating on that development. We can even have access to it remotely through the Internet. We capture enough data for roughly a 30-day period, sometimes as much as 45 days. So, we effectively monitor our properties. And, you know, the one thing that we can say is, we strive to be very good stewards and to maintain the public trust. So, this development would be no different. We would, we'll install a security camera system, and we'll monitor it like we do all of our other properties. The other thing that was mentioned about Evans-
Bob, is that security system, is that tied into the police force as well, so they can, because I know they have a program for that?
We have something called mobile device management, and so, and with the Internet connection, it's available to the Police Department if they choose to. So, it's available, but not a requirement. In the City of Lompoc, we've also done it at our properties there, and they actually, all we require is that we install a piece of software on their phone or whatever device they want access to it. Because if somebody from the Police Department leaves and they're no longer an employee, we want to be able to remotely remove it so that they don't, they no longer have access. So, we've started to deploy that technology. So, there was mention about gang activity at Evans Park, and I can tell you that when I took over as Executive Director four years ago, we evicted three families within the first year that I became Executive Director, because there was issues. And I'm, and there are other gang members that still reside in our development, but they're nonviolent. And if they create issues for the neighborhood, then we would start eviction processes. And I can tell you that the security camera system that we use is highly effective. So, we've also engaged the city, the Police Department, to do random additional patrols for that development.
Commissioner Hernandez?
You mentioned the evictions. How long is the process to evict low-income? Is there a difference?
The process to evict is difficult, and I would say, you have to typically allow 60 to 90 days, but it depends on what the eviction is based on, so.
So, 60 to 90 days?
Yeah, I think that's a realistic timeframe. We have evicted sooner, and if there's, you know, if the circumstances warrant it, we could ask the courts to accelerate the process. But, so that's the family development at Evans Park. And here's the distinction I think we need to understand very clearly. Our experience with the special needs developments that we have throughout the county is, there are no gang members who are also special needs. That just, that just doesn't happen. So, you know-
There are no low-income gang members?
There are low-income folks, but the special needs folks that we serve, I do not know of any of our developments that serve special needs that are also part of gangs. So, it may be possible, but our experience tells us otherwise. So, these are not violent people. So, we have a referral process, and if you want to know more about that, I'll defer to my colleague, John Polansky. But we work with service providers. We'll do the income qualification, but we'll also have a discussion with the service providers who will refer qualified candidates to meet those special needs. And I'm, I don't know if there's any other questions that you had, that you heard, but I'm happy to answer.
Commissioner Blatche?
Yes, Commissioner Havlicek, you spoke about eviction a little bit. Is there a, is there a conduct policy as well, and an eviction policy? Can you talk a little bit about maybe that?
Yes. If you don't mind, Commissioner, I'd also like to address the parking a little bit more clearly, because that was a major issue, and it is a major issue. So, we've stated before that the vast majority of the folks we serve simply won't have a vehicle. That's, that, going forward, that's, that's the way it will be, I'm certain. But we, but the agreement that we will have with the tenants, it's part of a lease addendum, they will have to declare what vehicles they have up front. So, if everyone, if a candidate, if an applicant is income-qualified and also has a qualified disability, but has a vehicle and we do not have a space, we will go to the next applicant on the waiting list. That's exactly how the mechanics of how the process will work. So, we can confidently assure you that the number of vehicles allowed on that site can be controlled. And the lease will also have a provision so that they can't just own a vehicle, they have to declare it. And again, if there's not a space available on-site, they cannot have it. So, as far as the towing goes, that is the process. If we have a lease violation, we will enforce it. And we will also not allow non-operating vehicles on our site. We will tow for non-operating vehicles. We give ample warning to the residents, and they have time to remedy that process. And if they don't, then the vehicle will be towed. So now, sorry, conduct. So, if there's problems either with the tenants, typically if there's, if there's issues with the tenants, we have a method, because we have somebody on-site, the neighbors immediately surrounding that individual can report to our property manager. Whoever that property manager will be will provide the information to the neighbors, so if they see something in their surrounding community, there's a way for us to follow-up with that individual if there are specific behavioral or conduct issues. So, and we will address them. And again, if it, if there are issues that create major problems with the development or with the neighborhood, we will enforce the lease, so that everyone enjoys quiet enjoyment of their unit.
I had a quick question, and before I do, actually, I've got to do a piece of bookkeeping. For disclosure of any commissions, I did ask everybody, and then I forgot to mention that I have spoken to Joe Halsel, so, just for disclosure purposes. So, have, do you, does the Housing Authority, does it have any senior living facilities that are strictly for seniors, or not?
Yes, we have a number of developments that are dedicated to seniors. We have quite a few in the City of Lompoc.
Okay. And, and has this piece of property at this point completely transferred over to the Housing Authority, or is it contingent on, on the use being changed?
It's contingent upon the use being changed, so we do not have ownership of it at this time.
I see. Okay. I'm sorry. Further questions?
So, I guess that would lead into, can you make it a senior project? I mean, you've said that you're going to get the mental health, physical disabilities. Is there a possibility you can make it a senior living?
We would not be, our involvement in this is contingent upon the approval for a special needs development. We will not pursue this opportunity if it remains a senior development.
And how do you, the guest parking was a very interesting question. So, if we're, if we're maxed out on our spaces, what is the, what kind of guests can we expect, and how are they going to handle that as far as parking?
Thank you for asking. So, as, so we discussed the legal aspects of how we'll enforce the parking. From a practical aspect, as mentioned before, many of these people will not have vehicles. So, right now, we have an ADA space, we have a manager's space, and one guest's space. If the Commission would like to change the mix, to have additional guest spaces and less spaces for, for the tenants, we're open to that. And the reason why we're open to it is because, again, as a practical matter, very few of them will have vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, thank you. There was mention of the pedestrian access in the back, and one of the speakers mentioned something about it was designated as an emergency access at one point, and now it's no longer designated as such. Is that correct? Maybe this is a question for staff, and is that the case? It's no longer emergency, it's just pedestrian access?
Thank you, Commissioner German. There is an existing gate in that wall currently. The subdivision wall on the northern boundary exists, as it is now, there is an existing gate there. They are going to use that also for emergency access, because the fire department requires the ability to be able to have firemen come in with hoses to address any firefighting needs from the DeJoy side. And since there is no driveway or access and a wall there, they require that that gate be retained.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez? Any questions?
Chair? So, just to expand on that last, so it will not be available or open as a man gate? It won't be an opening? This will be a sealed project on the north end?
If the applicant would like to restrict it to only emergency access, then yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Bob, I have another quick question, and that is, if we asked it of you, I assume you could also put into the lease that not only could, would an applicant have to disclose a vehicle, but they could be limited to only one vehicle? So, if, for instance, you had two spaces available, and an applicant came up and they happened to have two vehicles, if we just wanted them to have one vehicle, then you could in essence skip to the next person? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we can definitely limit it to one vehicle.
Obviously, part of this is minimizing the number of vehicles each household has, and so you don't want one person taking up two or three spaces with oddball cars.
And if I may, I was asked an interesting question by a reporter. How can you limit or require someone to have only one vehicle or zero vehicles? And the answer to that question is very simple. To live at this development is strictly voluntary. So, but if you are going to live, you have to abide by the rules, the House rules, which include parking. So, we can, we can designate those things legally, without any issues.
This is a question for staff. So, as I understand it, this does not qualify as a major transit stop, because we do 30 minutes instead of 15 minutes?
By state law, that requires the reduction to parking to be allotted for special needs, there are certain criteria that have to be met. One of those criteria points is that it has to be by a major transit stop. That is defined by the intersection of two routes that run at a 15-minute interval. Currently, there is no place or transit line in the City of Santa Maria that meets that requirement.
So, how can they have reduced parking if we don't meet that requirement?
They, they do not have reduced parking through the state law. They do have the ability to obtain reduced parking through your action of the PD permit, a permit amendment to the PD permit, reducing the parking requirement. That's been- That's been included in the findings of the permit amendment.
Okay, thank you.
So the, so the, the reduction in parking is strictly on us. It's not, it's not something that's being presented as, as an allowance or reduction because of some sort of state or, or federal?
Technically, that is correct. That additional information was provided to you so that you could see what state projects, how they view and review affordable and special needs housing. The state does significantly reduce parking requirements for these type of housing in an effort to encourage this type of housing to occur throughout the state.
And it was allowed, there was a, a discount allowed because of senior housing. So it was originally allowed, but now it's on us in essence, is that correct?
The parking, the municipal code parking requirement for senior housing is different than just regular multifamily. Our code doesn't have designated affordable or special needs housing specialized in the parking requirements. So we just then have to defer to what multifamily parking requirements are. Senior housing, however, is specified in the parking requirements, and that is at a ratio of one space for every three units. So when this project was a senior project, it met its parking requirements based on that.
Okay.
Commissioner Seifert, you had a question?
Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Lopez, any further questions? Thank you very much.
Commissioners, can I make one more comment?
Bob means?
One of the, one of the issues that came up was not having any kind of fence along West Cox Lane. And I agree with the neighbors. I personally would like to have some kind of decorative fence, even if it's only four or five feet, maybe a wooden fence or decorative fence, if that would be permissible, something that would be attractive, you know, from the street, but still integrate with the street. I just offer that for consideration, or we can handle it separately.
What does staff think about that?
Within the front setback, it's typical to see something three feet or lower. It was upon staff's request that the walls be removed to integrate the project into a more traditional, single-family type of neighborhood design and not to have the walls. Through the revisions of the project and with community concern, the wall was added back on the DeJoy side, and so that's going to remain. And I think it's even going to be modified for the one neighbor to, to the back of the property. It's our recommendation that the front, because these are cottages with front porches, that it blend with the neighboring residences and have that traditional, classic residential front without a wall in the front. That is our recommendation, however, it is typical to see something like a three-foot fence or decorative landscaping in the front. That's common.
Mr. Chair, Ryan can correct me, but I believe that there's no permit required for a three-foot fence or lower in the...
That's correct.
They would be able to do that unless you impose a condition not to.
Further questions from staff, of staff or the applicant? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hearing none, let's go ahead and bring, close the public.
Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hassel, go ahead.
So I just wanted, I wanted to be able to address the, you know, the possibility of the project staying a senior project, because this was, this was a really important thing that, that we were doing with you guys over the last year and a half. And so through the purchase of this property, and only because of the purchase of this property, we will, I mean, we are bringing, we're going to be bringing another, a senior project that's going to be between 60 and 80 units to our downtown, only because we have, we have made this sale. So we were going to do 30 with the project and funds and things that we had in front of us. And, and we will this year, and you guys get to, you guys will get to decide, you know, how many units we get to do downtown. But it, we're going to be adding many more times the senior units because of this transaction with the Housing Authority. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hassel. Okay. Going back to it, we'll go ahead and close the public comments period, public period, and we will bring it back to discussion by the planning commissioners. Who wants to start? Any comments? Mr. Seifert?
I don't want to start this.
Okay. We have been asked to adjourn for five minutes. Five minutes, so we will adjourn for five minutes. Hmm? Gentlemen?
There you go.
Can we go ahead and have a seat? There we go. And Commissioner Lopez has been kind enough to say that he'll take the first stab at this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, it's, it's a question of highest and best use. Single-room occupancy, you have 30 units there that are 550 square feet. When you could have a senior family in there, I, I think it makes better sense. For me, the parking was an issue, is an issue. I do recall Commissioner Hernandez's comment at the last meeting regarding parking and, or having cars. And it was, you know, that's one of the first runs on the, on the ladder of upward mobility. And I heard that on the radio the other day, and I said, yeah, you're right. You know, the, the first thing people do is get a car so they can get a better job or move to a different location. So, so for me, it's not a question of, of having the type of neighbors that have been brought up here tonight, and actually take exception to that, those are some of the most vulnerable people in our society, along with seniors. I think that, that, you know, a while back, people of different color couldn't move into a, a different residential area without people complaining that, you know, those are going to be my neighbors. So for me, it wasn't a question of the type of tenants that are there. For me, it's a question of the highest and best use. We have a, a big housing shortage here on the central coast, especially city of Santa Maria. And for me, it makes sense that being able to control 333 units and maybe shift some people around, make, use these 30 occupants maybe into some of the studios and other, on other properties, and keep this a senior project, I think it's, it's possible to do. So, so for me, it's, it's tough, but I, I really would, would like to see it remain a senior project. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Blauch?
Well, I, you know, the Housing Authority, I think, answered all the questions very well. You know, I had one concern after last meeting about whether or not we were going to be able to really prove the parking situation, and even though there's no guarantee, you know, what I had asked for was at least some numbers, some photos, something that we can at least say, hey, we've made a reasonable evaluation on, and I think that, that that was presented pretty well today. I commend that, that effort. You know, I think they've, they've certainly made the case with what they're saying here and their lease restrictions, that, that there is a opportunity, there is the possibility that they can enforce these items. You know, not foolproof, without a doubt, there's nothing foolproof, but I think, based on the information I'm hearing, that they've been able to address the concerns, at least my concerns, from the last meeting. You know, I, I think, you know, their background and experience tends to speak for itself, and I think the, the conduct policy, the eviction policy that was discussed, the cameras, I think was a very good thing. That's, that's a question that was in my mind, and I think preemptively, Mr. Havelcheck answered that very well. You know, security, well, security can have, could be an issue anywhere, regardless of the housing situation or use. So I, I had some doubts at last meeting. I think, I think those have been answered. I think there's a need for housing in general, so whether it's senior or whether it's the special needs, I think either way, it's, it's a good thing. Just in general, providing that housing, it's good to hear that there's potential for other senior housing to maybe offset the potential loss here. So that's, that's a promising thing. But I do appreciate the, the feedback and then the answer to the questions at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes. I think the Housing Authority and Mr. Hassel, he's a, a great developer, the Housing Authority does a great job at, you know, managing their properties. And when I reviewed again, you answered my question about the smooth bus, and so that's not a possibility. And so now I looked at, you know, the transit, and so whether that was going to be a possibility for people with mental health issues or, or disabilities, and that's quite a, you know, a far walk. I really would like to keep this as a senior project. I really think that we're trying to make something fit where it's not, I think it's a great project, I just don't think this is a location for it because of where it's located in terms of the transit, in terms of all the restrictions that we're imposing because we're trying to make it fit where it doesn't. And because of that, I think that we have not, or in, in my opinion, this commissioner didn't get, you know, the, the issues that were raised did not get addressed in terms of the housing for the population that it wants to serve.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifert?
This is a tough project for me. I was really excited to see a senior project coming online, and the fact that it was changed midstream, I wasn't real excited about that. I, I do need, we do need to take of our seniors, but we also need to take care of these other folks also. But my, I think the basis of my decision tonight and the way that I'm leaning really goes to the neighborhood. You know, this is a, and, and I'm not sure they're going to agree with me, but is, what I've looked at, as, as a senior project, you're going to have no control over this project. There's not going to be any cameras, there's not going to be any parking restrictions, there's not going to be any guest restrictions. You're going to have a 14 spaces, I believe, and they're going to be full all the time. And I believe that the, the biggest thing I've heard on this project is parking from day one. So I really have to believe that if parking is the huge issue here, that the Housing Authority has the means to take care of that. They have the take care, they have the means to make sure that it's a safe project, and they have the ability to eliminate anyone that isn't a safe resident for your concerns as far as who's living with, next to you. My biggest thing here is the parking because that's what I've heard from day one. I, I think a senior project would be great there. I think this, the disability project would be also good. But I, I'm really leaning towards the, the approval of this because of the parking, because of the security, and because of the ability of the Housing Authority to manage the neighborhood and to manage the problems that the residents of that neighborhood have come forth and said. I really believe that this would be a better project for you than a senior project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Like Commissioner Seifert, I'm, I'm torn on this project. I, I really am. I, I get that the neighborhood would like to see senior housing here. Frankly, I would like to see senior housing here. I'm not sure that I would have approved this, this, this project had it originally come to us as, as a special needs project versus a senior project. There's the impact of the quiet neighborhood and, or, you know, trying to maintain a quiet neighborhood. But like, like Commissioner Seifert said, as far as the actual parking goes, I think that the Housing Authority, my, my own experiences from quite a few years ago with the Housing Authority, I, I know that they really keep a very, very tight rein on their tenants. And so from that standpoint, I think that, I think that you actually, as, as Commissioner Seifert pointed out, you'll, you'll actually have more control of the, of the project itself and of, of the surrounding areas for, for parking and, and, and your tenants and that sort of thing. So as I said, it, it's been a very, very difficult project. You know, I, I will just reiterate, I, I don't know that I would have approved it right out of the chute like this. And, and I don't like the fact that it's being swapped and we're kind of being stuck with this, well, you know, if we, if we don't do it, then everything falls apart. You know, for the additional element of, of that the... You know, for the additional element of that the, the funding of this is going to, or the sale of this is going to allow funding for a larger senior facility that's twice the size or better, that's also a carrot for me. So it might actually be in a situation where the neighborhood is better off with the Housing Authority holding on to it, and the community as a whole in Santa Maria will be better off in that more actual senior living spaces will be available shortly. And it is for that reason that I, this commissioner is leaning towards approving it. With that, any other comments? All right. Do we have any sort of motions? And if, and if we do have motions, there's, pardon?
Mr. Senko, did you want some?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something?
No, I'm waiting. You probably handled it.
We would need two things on there. There is the onsite and offsite monitoring. We would need something included into that. And then the concept of one car per household maximum until, of course, they've filled up their 10 spaces.
There was also the opportunity to allow for an additional guest spot, or?
We can do that if we want.
And I think that would probably be pretty necessary.
So two guest spots instead of one?
That would be my recommendation.
And you can do so if you want to make a motion.
Are they adding cameras?
What's that?
I thought the cameras were part of the project.
Cameras are part of the project, right? I mean, that's, we don't need to put that in there, that's something you will just do standard?
You can, if you like, we're going to do it regardless, but whatever your pleasure is.
Okay. Whoever makes the motion may or may not ask for cameras.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, there was one other issue, the?
Yes, sir.
The man gate, is that going to remain, currently I don't know if that's conditioned to, I'm kind of looking at staff. Is there a condition for that gate on the DeJoy side?
Is there a condition requiring it or restricting it?
Require, restricting it for emergency access only, is that the current condition? If, or do they need to do something? Because there was, there was somebody indicated a preference for reserving it for only emergency access, if I'm not mistaken.
That was from the original PD permit?
Correct.
And there was a conditioning requiring the gate because it is essential to the fire department that it's there. I don't know what language.
We're talking about leaving, we're talking about leaving it so then it's nothing but an emergency gate and not an open gate that residents can come and go into the adjoining neighborhood, so that's?
If the planning condition wants more assurance than the applicant's agreement to do that, we can draft a condition.
Okay. So four conditions, possible modifications.
Okay, so let's give it a shot. Okay, so I would make a motion that we approve the amendment A2019-009 to the planned development permit, PD 2018-009, with the following additions: that the north wall shall have emergency access only, that there's going to be two guest parking spaces, that, what was the other?
That each household has a maximum of one car until they've filled up their nine spaces.
Each household will be allowed only one vehicle?
Maximum.
Maximum? That's, is that three or four?
No, that's three. And then you have the onsite and offsite monitoring.
And we would also like to include the offsite and onsite monitoring with the cameras that the applicant has stated that they will be willing to?
Of parking.
Excuse me?
Of parking, yeah. I think, I think it was of parking, they were going to do offsite as well as onsite monitoring of parking of their residents.
Okay, okay, yes, of the monitoring of the parking, and then we also are going to put in the cameras? Because we wanted to put in the cameras, so we also want to add that they will have the security cameras onsite, that we're discussed.
Okay.
Do we have everything?
I think so.
That's the motion.
Is that everything, staff? Is that everything? Maybe?
We have a revised condition up on the screen for you that includes the parking conditions. We just modified the vehicle ownership restriction to add the requiring all residents to park personal vehicles onsite, one vehicle per unit and two guest spaces. And we can add a sub A and B to condition number one, which references previous permits. And sub A could be in reference to the north wall shall only provide emergency access through the gate. And sub B can be that there shall be camera systems onsite monitoring at all times.
I would, I would rather see that the stuff in red spelled out all of the parking spaces and what they're designated for. That's leaving a little open right there, because we still have the manager spot and we have a?
So we have nine, two, and one, is that right? Nine residents, two guests, one facility manager.
That's 12 spots.
What was?
One is an ADA.
Oh, we had two ADAs.
There's two ADAs.
Two, four, five, out of 13, so it's eight.
Okay.
Give us one moment.
Eight, two, two, one.
That way it's quite clear.
The site plan only shows one ADA.
Is that all of them?
Ryan, can you check that?
Commissioner Blanco seems to be correct. There's only one designated van accessible on this site, site plan.
Hold on, she's dictating, hold on. And then I have a modification? Okay, Ryan? It, Ryan, it's been pointed out that the plans only show one ADA spot.
Okay, it was in the present, their applicant's presentation, they mentioned two ADA spaces.
They did. So there's a?
Is that an error, Laurie? Okay, so there's just one? Okay. And so what I would prefer is requiring all residents to park personal vehicles onsite, nine spaces, I would say period, and then, and then the project as a whole will have one vehicle per unit to, oops.
Sorry, I didn't have to do that.
That's all right. Or maybe, I guess, the period maybe comes one vehicle per unit, period. And then? You see what I'm saying? I would like the, I'd like the sentence to end with one vehicle per unit, where it's, where it's basically discussing the residents, and then that sentence be, the project will have a total of two guest spaces, one ADA, blah, blah, blah. Two guest spaces, one ADA space, one manager's space, and then? Would be the modified motion.
Thank you.
The project requires nine spaces, two, nine residence spaces, two guest spaces, one manager's space. Okay.
John?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, let me say there was also one staff space, and that's for people providing support services that we had. That would bring it up to 14.
Eight residents.
Did you get that, Nada? Okay.
We have one. It says one. One space, yeah.
Are there 14 or are there 13 spaces?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
There's 14 spaces including the ADA.
And?
My poor spelling is on display for everyone.
I think.
Okay. How about this version?
So the project will have eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, eight.
It says 13. Must be nine.
It's nine.
Nine resident spaces. Back to nine.
I'm also a great counter.
Good job, Nada.
It's nine now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we need to change the ADA.
Two spaces, one ADA.
Because ADA.
One vehicle per unit, yeah. There's a little misleading on the one vehicle.
What's that?
The one vehicle per unit is a little misleading because we have 29 units.
Oh, so, oh, you see, see?
Thirty.
Yeah, 30.
So you see, requiring all residents to park personal, with a maximum of?
Up to.
One unit per, one vehicle per unit for a total of?
For total max.
Nine resident spaces.
So how will they pick what units get to have a vehicle?
They do.
They said it's a first come, first served.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Do we want for a total of nine resident spaces?
Up to, up to a maximum?
One vehicle per unit maximum, up to, yeah, comma.
So unit, comma.
Okay.
Sentence by committee, this is awesome. Let's see, vehicle onsite, one vehicle.
After unit?
Yeah.
So it's?
One vehicle per unit.
Parking, parking, person onsite with one vehicle per unit, comma.
Vehicle per unit, comma.
For a maximum? Up to.
Of up to nine residential spaces.
Okay, let's try this.
I'm showering, I'm not too.
I get sad every time I see this, there's no polar bears.
Very.
They're all, they're all dead.
To one vehicle per unit for a maximum of nine resident?
This is the parking, this is where we're going to go.
Two guest spaces.
Yeah, this is the parking lot.
One ADA space, one staff space, and?
What, you think they're mythical? Yeah, like unicorns.
How does this look?
Instead of with up to, say with no more than one vehicle per unit.
So do we just say as modified?
Yes, as amended.
The motion is amended as modified.
Is there a second? Can I second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Motion carries.
Three, two.
Good luck, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll allow the room to clear, just so we can have longer meetings. All right, we'll move on to other business. Item number six, oral reports from Planning Commission and staff. Do we have any oral reports from the Planning Commission? How about from staff?
I got one.
Oh, oh.
Julio's, Julio's is out. The insurance guy, that big truck, you got it parked at the Shell station now on?
Yes, yeah.
Federavia and Broadway.
Chair Dickerson, gave me a look at you, and Commissioner Seifert, members of the Planning Commission, this issue has been brought to my attention recently. Thank you for?
Recently?
Yes, bringing it again to my attention a little more recently. I am going to redouble my efforts to bring something to the Planning Commission in study session for your, to look at, as that project is long overdue and?
Right, as I was driving here tonight, I looked over, saw the vehicle absolutely parked, locked, it's definitely advertising, there's, there was no reason for it to be there otherwise. Thank you.
Any other comments from Planning Commissioners? What do we hear from staff?
Looking at our upcoming schedules, our next meeting with the commission is not until May 2nd, and that's a study session. So we have two items for that study session. And then the next evening hearing will be May 15th, and we potentially have three items lining up for that meeting. So until then, we don't have anything ready until May 2nd.
Okay, and I will not, as I notified you, I will not be here on the 15th or the 16th.
Okay.
I'll be out of town.
That's okay, because we'll have Vice Chair, Mr. Commissioner Lopez.
Can you hand me the gavel, please? Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if I can ask at this time, since the item number five was contained, can we have a little bit more on the traffic? I guess the, the information that was, that was asked for by Caltrans, can we have a little bit more information on that for number five? I don't know if that's coming on the 15th or not.
For Costco.
Yeah, for Costco.
We don't know if that's going to be on the 15th.
Okay.
So we'll work on that, though.
Okay, thank you.
And the, just to clarify, the H2A, or the temporary employee housing, that's going to be City Council's next session on 16th in theory?
That's correct. The residential discussion that went before the commission, you recommended to the council, it will be on the 16th of April.
And if I heard correctly in the last night's meeting, while I was watching that, do we expect to see the motel H2A issue wander before us, or is it happily staying with the City Council?
Amendments to Title 12 need to be reviewed and recommended upon by the Planning Commission. So it will be, if there's direction from the council, when we go on the 16th to, we're going to talk about residential, but we're also going to probably talk about commercial. The council can direct us to go back and work on an ordinance for the commercial portion, and amendments to Title 12 go to the Planning Commission.
Oh, joy. Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Turned.[1786.01]